If he shows up at the start.
Uh huh. Good evening, everyone. I now call the May 1st, 2024 meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Alfonja, here. Dr. Banks Gray? Ms. Cherry, here. Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels? Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Samuels and Dr. Banks Gray. And Dr. Banks Gray is actually watching. And she asked me to extend her deepest sorrow for not being here. She's at home convalescing, so she definitely wants to send her regards to everyone. And be sure to tell her I did exactly what she asked me to do because she will ask me, all right? So we want to move on with our opening. And so we have the pleasure of having our opening done tonight by Ms. Faith Gatling, who is a second grader at Aberdeen Elementary School. And she's going to come up and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
My name is Faith Rebecca Gatling, and I'm in second grade at Aberdeen Elementary in Ms. Kane's class. I just want to give a special shout out to my teacher and my parents. They've been challenging me, and they've been, they've been working hard so I can be here for this big moment. Everyone, please stand up and put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And do you have something to share with us this evening, Faith?
Yes, I'll be saying a poem called "I Am Unique."
All right.
I am unique. What makes me unique? The way I think, the way I speak, who I listen to, who I admire. To learn about life, I have a burning desire. I know what's right, I know what's wrong. To do the right thing makes me unique and strong. Unique and special, unique and great. Look at all the people I wish to emulate for this Douglas, the Boys, and Obamton and a few. Look how they changed the world. Now's a better place for me and you. To be unique is the always high. To try your best and reach for the sky. I am unique, so can't you see? There's no one around who could duplicate me.
Come back to, come back to the microphone. Come on, come on back, come on, come on, come on back here. Now, you can't get up there and do all of that and go sit down now, all right? That is awesome. That was absolutely amazing. Thank you so much for sharing that with us, and you certainly are unique. So I'm going to ask board members, do they have any comments or anything they would like to say?
I will.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Faith, I usually don't have a whole lot to say. But I was very inspired by what you just delivered to us. There was a gentleman that I like, I used to like him a little bit until he, sometime he just ignored me. But I think he may have had a little bit to do with what you learned on tonight. Could you tell me what his name is?
My mentor name is Deacon Carlton Ashby.
He was my mentor also.
Wow, I never knew that.
Okay, thank you. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Faith, I tell you, first of all, I love your name. You are just a beautiful young lady, inside and out, and I can tell. And you were so expressive, and I think that's what floored everybody. And you said it with passion. And I just want to tell you how proud I am, and I think you're right, there's nobody who can duplicate you. Good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Alfonja?
Faith, I'm curious to know, what's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject in school is math.
Wow, you did an amazing job. You should be very proud of yourself and your parents and your teachers. They've done, like you said in the beginning, just a wonderful job preparing you for today. That was incredible. Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Now, Faith, who do you have with you today?
I have my mom, I have my dad, I have my little brother, I have my teacher, Ms. Love Kane, I have my mentor, Deacon Carlton Ashby, I have my principal, Dr. Tiffany Getty-Suggs, I have my assistant principal, Ms. Mallory Reynolds, and I have my other teacher, Ms. Brinkley, and I have me here.
All right. Can you all stand to be recognized? All the folks she called off, will you stand to be recognized? Thank you all for sharing Faith with us tonight. We truly appreciate you being here. Faith, you could have been anywhere else, and you chose to be here with us, and so we thank you. We don't take that for granted at all. So thank you, and thank you to all who are pouring so much into Faith. When she started talking right away, I started to ask her, which church does she attend? And I already know because I see Deacon Carlton Ashby over there. So anything he seems to touch turns to gold. And so thank you, Deacon Ashby, for all that you do as well in this community. Thank you all.
And did you see how she called off all those names without even a sheet of paper? Faith, I'm telling you, I don't even remember half of the board members' names. You are, you are a smart little girl. Love it.
Thank you all. Let's give Faith one more round of applause. All right. Moving along to item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Alfonja that we approve tonight's agenda as printed. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja? Aye. Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is recognition. All right, and I guess I'm turning it over to Ms. Pollard.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Mason.
And she's our chief of secondary schools. That's why it kind of threw me for a minute there, so.
I'm filling in this evening, if that's okay.
That's all right. That's that other duties as assigned column.
Absolutely. Y'all are all very familiar with that, with that statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Members of the school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton family. We are excited to be here this evening to recognize two outstanding community partners as well as several of our exceptional students and staff. So at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Woodhouse to please proceed to the microphone to assist Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions with the 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. Local businesses, large and small, corporate-owned or family-run, play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. They have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools. The VSBA Business Honor Roll is a way for local school divisions to recognize these local businesses for their support and to say thank you for their vital contributions. Our first VSBA Business Honor Roll Honoree is Mr. Joseph Fromelt of Virginia Ship Repair. Mr. Fromelt, would you please join me up front by the podium? Virginia Ship Repair Association has partnered with the Maritime Academy since 2017 and was instrumental in implementing the wall-to-wall academy's model. Their partnership has demonstrated a deep commitment to students interested in the maritime industry. VSRAs ongoing engagement with the Maritime Academy has helped students build workplace skills, earn industry-recognized certifications, and career-specific knowledge, and develop critical knowledge, skills, and credentials that prepare them for high-demand careers in the maritime industry. Member organizations have shown their support annually by participating in signature events such as the Rising Ninth Grade Exploratory Event, My Future, My Journey, and the Transition Event for Graduating Seniors, Portrait of a Hampton Graduate Senior Conference, and Hiring Events. Under their leadership as members of the Maritime Advisory Board, students have gained access to over 30 hours of hands-on training annually by industry professionals, toured work sites, and had the opportunity to connect with mentors who help them navigate entry into the local workforce. Members have worked alongside faculty to create, implement, and annually review an industry-relevant curriculum. They have hosted teacher immersion experiences yearly to ensure the Maritime Academy teacher team knows the industry and the opportunities available for their students.
Mr. Fromelt, would you please join me on stage? On behalf of our chair, the entire school board, and Dr. Haynes, we would like to extend a huge thank you to you and the Virginia's Ship Repair for your support and investment in our young people. I am honored to present to you a certificate from the Virginia School Board Association and a resolution and a coin from the school board. May I read? I don't think I better read all. Am I supposed to read this or the certificate? The certificate reads, 2024 Business Honor Roll awarded to Virginia Ship Repair. The Hampton School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of the community, public schools, and students. Would you like to have a few words to say, Mr. Fromelt? I'd like to present that. On behalf of our school board and our chair and vice chair and Dr. Haynes, we would present you with this certificate.
And we also have a coin in the baggie for Mr. Fromelt.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition. I'm a small part of the association's, Virginia Ship Repair Association's, our continued outreach into the community and to support future careers in either the shipbuilding or ship repair industry. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, I invite Dr. James Harris to join me at the podium. He is representing Mr. Jacob Young and Mr. Trent Garrett of Next Generation Storytellers as they are not local and are unable to be with us tonight. In the 2022-2023 school year, NGS piloted its unique program with Hampton City Schools. High school students were introduced to various positions in the film industry such as directing, producing, screenwriting, and more. Four student-written short scripts were selected for production, giving students an opportunity to star in and help produce and direct professional-quality short films and earn a professional IMDB credit. These films debuted at the division's first Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival this past fall. The second year of work with Next Generation Storytellers began in the fall of 2023. Students had the opportunity to apply for a Screenwriting 101 course developed as a partnership between NGS and Hampton City Schools as well as a Movies 101 curriculum. Next Generation Storytellers helps to provide Hampton students with valuable entertainment industry skills and helps them make connections with industry professionals in a way that might otherwise not be possible. They also help provide support for our students, engage our community, and establish the portrait of a Hampton graduate, which is a core value in Hampton.
Dr. Harris, would you please join me on the stage? Dr. Harris, thank you for representing the Next Generation Storytellers tonight. We thank both Mr. Young and Mr. Garrett and the New Generation Storytellers for their dedication and passion for education and partnership with the Hampton City Schools. Next Generation Storytellers has been phenomenal, and we value their partnership. As such, I am honored to present you a certificate from the Virginia School Board Association as a VSBA Business Honor Roll Honoree and a resolution and coin from the Hampton City Schools to share with Mr. Young and Mr. Garrett. So let me read the certificate, and I have it this time. 2024 Business Honor Roll awarded to the Next Generation Storytellers. The Hampton City School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of the communities, public schools, and students. Congratulations. And my helper, and thank you so much.
The next recognitions are very exciting as we recognize some of our school counselors. First, I ask that Cara Hart of Bryan Elementary and Sheila Barnhart Ramirez of Langley Elementary join me up front at the podium. Bryan Elementary and Cara Hart as well as Langley Elementary and Sheila Barnhart Ramirez have been recognized by the American Counselor Association, or ASCA, as an ASCA Model Program, better known as RAMP. The RAMP designation recognizes schools that are committed to delivering an exemplary school counseling program. Honories are awarded for aligning their program with the criteria in the ASCA National Model, a framework for data-informed school counseling programs. Since the program's inception, more than 1,000 schools earned the RAMP designation. Research findings indicate that fully implemented school counseling programs are associated with a range of positive student, educational, and behavioral outcomes.
Ms. Hart and Ms. Barnhart Ramirez, would you please join me on the stage? Congratulations to Ms. Cara Hart and Ms. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez. Ms. Hart, on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, the Hampton City School Board, and Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. All right, let's read it again. Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Ms. Cara Hart, Bryan Elementary School, American School Board Counselor Association Recognition Model Program. Thank you so much for your service. Ms. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez is, in addition to being honored for the RAMP award, has also been named Virginia School Board Counselor Association 2024 Elementary Counselor of the Year. School Counselor of the Year award recognizes two outstanding professionals, one elementary and one secondary, who have been a positive impact in their school community. Contributions to the profession are measured by the use of the American School Counselor Association National Model, evidence of data-driven practices, and the implementation of a comprehensive school counseling program. Congratulations on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, the Hampton City School Board, and the Superintendent, Dr. Haynes. I am honored to present these two certificates and coins to the both of you. I was told to read, it says the same thing as the other one. All right.
Okay, congratulations to Ms. Cara Hart and Ms. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez. If there are any family members, special guests, administrators, or teachers in the audience tonight supporting these ladies, please stand to be recognized. Family, thank you so much for being here. Last but certainly not least, we have several high school students and teachers or administrators from four of our academies to celebrate. I ask that the following teachers and their students, please join me down front at the podium. From Phoebus High School, Chef Travis Walker, and students in the Academy of Hospitality From Kickatan High School, Maggie Nettles and the students in the Academy of Teaching, From Bethel High School, Daryl Gregory and students from the Academy of Media Arts and And from Hampton High School, Academy Principal Elizabeth Goodwin and Kimberly Sanders, and students from the Academy of Health, Human, and Financial Services. These representatives from each of the four Hampton City High Schools academies took part in the yearly Tastefully Yours fundraiser, which benefited the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank. Through their involvement in this community event, Hampton City Schools highlighted the talents of its students and demonstrated the community's spirit of empathy and unity. The culinary team and students earned second place for most creative dish, contending with more than 30 restaurants from across Hampton Roads. Additionally, Hampton City Schools secured the People's Choice Award for the comprehensive booth presentation encompassing all elements. This was a collaborative effort of each of the aforementioned academies. The contributions were as follows. Phoebus High School, Academy of Hospitality and Tourism. The culinary department created two sample dishes of scallops and lamb chops. I know. Bethel High School, the Academy of Media Arts and Design. The students created and designed the '80s-themed booth. Kickatan High School, the Academy of Teaching, Education, and Learning, also known as ATEL, presented a model of the Little Free Pantry Community Cupboard they built with the community's support as part of their project-based learning activity. Hampton High School, excuse me, the Hampton High School, the Academy of Health, Human, and Financial Services. The students provided budget-savvy recipes that showed a cost-per-serving based on ingredients.
All right, would all of you join me on the stage, please? All right. Just gather around me. Congratulations to all of these young people and their teachers and sponsors for this outstanding achievements and recognition. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, and the Hampton City School Board, and the Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present a certificate to each of the four academies. Now, be patient. Certificate reads, Certificate of Achievement for the Hampton City School Board, from the Hampton Students, from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Bethel High School, Academy of Media Arts and Design. Bethel High School representative. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Hampton High School, Academy of Health, Human, and Financial Services. This certificate is presented, congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Phoebus High School, Academy of Hospitality This certificate, congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Kickatan High School, Academy of Teaching, If there are any parents, any family members, special guests, administrators, or teachers in the audience tonight supporting these young people and teachers, please stand to Thank you. You all may be seated.
Okay, before you all leave the stage, we want to get a good picture.
All right, everybody. Three, two, one. There we go. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all. You may take your seats. Dr. Mason, this concludes the recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pollard. Excellent job. So next up, we have our Consent Agenda, item 3.01, Personnel Report 23-09 and 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of April 17th, 2023. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Alfonja that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. And now we have item number four, Superintendent and Staff Report, and I will turn the mic over to Superintendent Dr. Raymond Haynes.
Thank you, Chair Mason. Members of the board in the Hampton community, for our first report, we are pleased to have Dr. Tawana Porter-Branan, the President of Virginia Peninsula Community College, joining us this evening to provide an update regarding the academic programs at VPCC and some of the new
the academic programs at VPCC and some of the new initiatives underway. As the board is well aware, we certainly value our ongoing collaboration and named partnership with Dr. Porter Brennan and VPCC, and thank her for taking the time out of her schedule to join us this evening, as well as for her continued leadership in this region. Dr. Porter Brennan.
Thank you very much, Chairman Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, esteemed members of the board, and our friends, the staff from Hampton City Schools. Really appreciate you giving us some time tonight to give you an update on all the great things that are going on at your local community college and some of the things we have coming up. I would like to introduce my co-pilot tonight, our Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Success, Daniela Sigularova. She just completed her 10th month on the job, and she's already exceeded the goals we set for her just a short 10 months ago. So she's going to take the first part of the presentation. I'm just going to jump back in. So we're going to first start off talking about one of my favorite things is college enrollment. So I'm going to have Daniela take it away.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Everything we do at Virginia Peninsula Community College is data-informed. So Dr. Brennan can speak a lot about our data, but for tonight's presentation, we have just some highlights to inform our conversation. Our enrollment, as you can see from our first slide, of students enrolled in our credit side of the house is 8,670 students. These students are enrolled in classes pursuing their associate degrees with the intent to finish the degree, in some cases to continue directly to the workforce, in other instances to transfer to four-year institutions. In addition to these students, we have over 1,500 students enrolled in our non-credit side of the house. These are students who are pursuing certifications, these are short-term credentials, and really preparing students to directly step into the workforce in our local communities. This next slide is a particular pride of ours, and I'm sure you will join me in seeing the growth in our dual enrollment and celebrating together our collaborations and our partnerships. Not only have we seen an increase of 27% in our dual enrollment in all of our localities, but for Hampton Public Schools in particularly, you continue to enroll the majority of our dual enrollment students, and it has been an exceptional partnership, and we cannot continue to praise your team for the partnerships we've had. This year, I'm going to continue a little bit on the dual enrollment side of the house. This year, we have tried to engage further the students outside of the classroom. What we have offered to our dual enrollment students is engagement with our athletics. We've had a special event specifically designed for our dual enrollment students, parents, family members, as we want them to feel more that sense of connection with our college. We are also increasing the communication with the parents, with our representatives from the school systems, and we hope that all of these students will continue to seek engagement with the college even after high school graduation. We know many of them will pursue whether it is a four-year degree or a two-year degree completion, and we want to be here for them as they pursue further their education. The next slide, the first point again is the highlight of our dual enrollment. The second one is the 32% growth in our enrollment in our workforce, short-term credentials, very proud with that point. And this is not only growing our number of students, we are recording also that each one of our students is taking more classes. So we are seeing that students really appreciate being a part of our college and continue to increase the enrollment. This semester, we are also seeing an increase of 7% in our spring enrollment, and many of you are probably seeing nationally that a lot of universities, four-year and two-year institutions are reporting decline in enrollment. So seeing that we have a very healthy increase in our enrollment speaks value about the work that this college plays in our local community and all of our investments in our students. It is important for us to not only enroll the students for one semester, we want to see them succeed beyond that first semester. We are focusing a lot of work on retaining students from the first to the second semester and helping them complete their degree so that they can be employed immediately after graduation, and we are showing consistently that we have increased all of our benchmarks. So I'm very excited to share those points with you. And we continue to monitor not only internally, we work also at data that is shared by other institutions, and one study that recently came was conducted by the State Council of Higher Education. What they reviewed is across all the institutions, four-year institutions and two-year institutions, what is happening in terms of mobility of the students completing their degrees. Our four-year partners are doing excellent work graduating students, but only 57% of the four-year graduates remain in their communities. They remain in Virginia. The rest do not stay. As you can see, 78% of the students who graduated from Virginia Peninsula Community College remained in our neighborhoods. They remained in our communities, and they continue to contribute to our local economy. So this really shows the impact we have on the community. And this is another slide that shows how our graduates are hired immediately after graduation, whether they pursued a four-year degree completion, a fast-forward, short-term credential, or an associate degree. On average, it is close to 80% that these folks get hired after only 18 months of completion.
Thank you. And I did want to share, I forgot to mention it, but we have been giving this presentation to mayors and chairs from Gloucester to Hampton, all school boards, county administrator, and city council meetings, and I just realized as I was sitting there, we've used this picture for all of them, and I don't know if you recognize them, but those are your high school graduates who got their associate's degree last year, right before they got their high school diploma. So I was sitting, I don't know if you recognize them, but those are Hampton City School, I think those are Phoebus graduates. It just occurred to me. So hopefully I don't get into trouble. It's not favoritism, but I just realized that those are incredible students who graduate from high school and college at the same time. So why is this important, especially this? If I could go back to this slide for a second. Everyone has heard about the talent crisis, the talent shortages across the country. I will tell you across the world. When I travel, every country is dealing with talent shortages, and here in Hampton Roads and on the peninsula. And so the ability to say that 85% of our short-term graduates are, those are welders, HVAC, cybersecurity, the skilled trades folks are employed within six months, and even the one to your left, 75% of our transfer students employed within 18 months, that's still pretty incredible if you think, if you get an associate's degree and transfer to get your baccalaureate degree, 18 months later, you should still be in school, right? And so to say 75% of our associate degree completers would be employed, it's probably much higher if you give it a little bit more time. If you give it two years, we probably had a much higher percent. But it's important because our community is desperate for talent, and we want talent to stay in Virginia. So I like to remind folks when it comes to investing in community colleges, I like to remind them that I love our four-year partners, but our students stay in this region, they work in this region, and if I move on, they contribute to the economic vitality of the region. And so this study, it's an economic impact study. Every college does one, because every college wants to be able to say, come to my college, and an investment in your student's tuition will reap benefits from the community. So every one of the colleges does this study. A company called Lightcast completes this study, and I'll move quickly, there's a lot of numbers coming up, but I'll move quickly. This one basically says, what does Virginia Peninsula Community College contribute to our region? So on your far left-hand side, it basically says, just because we exist, right, we contribute $29 million when it comes to the payrolls that we have, the businesses that we support, the consultants that we hire, the small businesses in the community that we do business with, we contribute $29 million. Our students contribute 5.5 million. So not our graduates yet, the students who are still currently enrolled are spending, right, 5.5, whether it's in rent, whether it's in shopping, whatever they're spending money on. Our students are spending $5.5 million on average. The 211 million is about our alumni, right? So those are the folks, when we say 80% of our students, the VCCS is 80%, Virginia Peninsula Community College is 78%, but when they're staying in the region, they're buying houses in the region, they're paying taxes in the region, they're buying cars, right, they're investing their earnings in the region. And so the region benefits from Virginia Peninsula Community College graduates, especially because they stay here and they contribute to the economic vitality of the college. The other study that Lightcast does is it talks about the return on investment. So I love to talk about this, because when you hear people saying, we don't know if college is worth the investment, they're not talking about community colleges, they're definitely not talking about Virginia Peninsula Community College. There's a lot of data here. I will surmise it in two points. What this study says is for every dollar that a student invests in their education, they will see a return of $7 over the working, over their life of work, right? And if you look at how much the region benefits, for every dollar the region invests in, which means you taxpayers, if you pay taxes, you pay my salary, you pay for students' tuitions and things like that, for every dollar you invest, taxpayers see a return of $3 invested back in the region. And so there was an article that we shared recently, and we won't name names, but when I say every college does this study, every college does this study, and in the Virginia Peninsula region, our rates outpaced almost every other college in the region. So when your students come to our community college, they are contributing to the region, and they're improving their livelihoods and their lives at much higher rates than our sister institutions, but I won't name names. I will tell you really quickly just some of the things we have going on in the near future. If you pass by our college every day, and hopefully for the next three years, you will see lots of construction. I'm very excited about that. We are rebuilding our campus theater. There was a collapse in April of 2021. We're rebuilding the theater, and that's exciting because we want to make arts accessible to the children of the Virginia Peninsula. We want to make it accessible and affordable, and we want to give the peninsula children an opportunity to be exposed to the arts without having to travel outside of their community. So we're really excited about that. We're building a Center for Excellence in Early Childhood Education, which is going to be focused on community education, so helping new parents understand how to raise healthy children, advocating for children who might have special needs, helping teachers prepare for new state regulations that are coming into play, and so we're really excited about that. We're opening our third skills trade center in Newport News to match the one in Hampton and James City County. We're going to be seeking funding. We received a grant to have land to build a new healthcare training center, our third healthcare training center, to scale up the healthcare professions that are also desperate for talent, and you will see this at the end. I'll skip to it really quickly because I'm so excited about it. The original footprint of the college is what you see on Highway 64. As you go back and forth, if you see our highway sign, there are some one-story buildings from 1967 that you see. We're demolishing those buildings this year, and this building will replace it. We just approved the design last month. It's going to be a three-story building. It's going to be filled with innovation and technology. It's going to be a statement piece, and we want our campus to look as great as we believe it is. And so that is going to be coming in a few years. We are also expanding our programming. One of the things that we're looking at is who goes into what programs, and so we want to create opportunities for limited-income populations who don't have a lot of time or resources in order to go get a two-year degree. So we're looking at programming that is short-term, that's also stackable credentials. So you can start in our CNA program, go to the LPN program that was just approved, and we have a half-a-million-dollar new lab, and then become a registered nurse and go on and get your bachelor's and master's. But we're trying to create programs that are stackable, that meet people's time and income constraints. We're increasing our technology programming, so ethical hacking, there's a lot of talk about artificial intelligence. And for those of us who remember the World Wide Web that, you know, was live in 1993, there was the same fear in 1993 that the web was going to ruin the world, and we know that didn't happen. It won't happen with artificial or generative AI, and so we're looking to prepare future talent for the future by expanding some of our short-term programming. I will share, you may have heard, we paused our dental hygiene clinic, our dental hygiene program. We have to revise the model, but we're hoping to reopen it in about a year. It's a beautiful program. 100% of our students pass, and so we're looking forward to reopening that program soon. The last thing I will mention is, we don't have a career services center at our college, and we absolutely, right, are you all shocked? Right, it's ridiculous that we don't have a career services center at our college, and that's something that we're looking to change. Immediately, we're seeking funding. One of the things that we'd like to be able to do with that center is also partner with guidance counselors in the middle schools and the high schools in order to create career maps, create internship opportunities and mentorship opportunities. So we're looking to open a career center, not just for our college students, but something that would be a partnership with Hampton City Schools and all of our school boards, because we know by the time a student gets to college, it's really kind of late to just start thinking about your career. And so we're actively seeking funding for the new healthcare training center and our career internship training center. And I think that's everything. So thank you for giving us some time, and we're happy to take any questions if your schedule allows it.
Yes, thank you so much for such a wonderful presentation and great update. I will certainly say it is amazing to see the footprint that VPCC is really making in this community. So thank you. Any comments, questions from board members?
I do have one.
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. I was looking at the portion that said propose healthcare training center. How soon are you looking at that service center being in operation? And are you looking for funds for that? Okay, wonderful.
And two years is the goal. We found that once we have the funding, the build takes about a little less than two years, depending on how large it's going to be, but two years is the goal. And we are, we're launching a capital campaign, that might be too much information, but it's starting this summer in order to obtain funds. And we've been doing some other work, but we do believe that there is enough demand from our healthcare partners, smaller and larger, who already, they're the only reasons we're doing this, because they've said we need to expand healthcare, including behavioral health. So I do believe the funding shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Are you seeking funding from government agencies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also from the healthcare facilities that, you know, grants and things of that nature?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And if there's anyone you'd like to connect us to, we can have a conversation later.
It sounded that way, didn't it? Like he was trying to see if he would call off somebody he knew.
We can talk.
Thank you all very much.
Any other comments? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was a powerful presentation. It really, really was. And I know you said you've been giving it to city councils and different school boards. How has it been received?
I will share, it has been so positive. We actually, I mean, we just planned to do this to give updates throughout the peninsula, and it wasn't until it started getting picked up in the newspapers in different regions that we realized how exciting, because you know, when you do the work every day, you just do the work.
Right.
But there has been a lot of excitement, and mostly because many of you remember, you know, three years ago, the college was in a tough space, and I think this community loves the community college, and people wanted us to win. So to actually see the growth and to see it happen, I think there's a lot of folks who've been rooting for us to make these kinds of changes and improvements. And so I would share that it has been broadly celebrated throughout the peninsula.
That's wonderful to hear. And of course, Hampton City Schools is always rooting for you. I do have one quick question, if I may. You talked about the headcount of like 1,500 students who are in the non-credit courses, but you talked about in an effort to gain short-term certifications?
Yes.
Could you just give an example of what some of those certifications would be?
Oh, sure. There's, so it could be anything from your emergency medical technician, so the folks who you might see if you ever get picked up in an ambulance, or nursing CNA programs, phlebotomy, EKG technicians, but also electrical wiring, facilities, maintenance, HVAC technician, welding, anything related to the marine industry, so submarine coating, submarine electrician. We probably have about 75 different. And business, information technology, there's at least 75 different short-term credentials that are between six weeks and 16 weeks where you can make quite a good living without student loans, and most of those programming, after our financial aid, there's financial aid for those programs, the majority of our students go for a third of the cost to $0.
And that's powerful in itself that there's such a diverse range of offerings.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And thank you. Stephanie?
I just have one thing to say. This is remarkable information, and you all are doing an exceptional job, along with your staff and your administrators and everyone. Congratulations to you. You have really You have really taken this college to another place. My son goes there, so I know how supportive the universe, the college is, and all the opportunities that are available to him from being there. And so I just really appreciate that. I just really appreciate, and very proud of it as well.
And I have to share, we are not great on our own, I have to say, working with the principals, the guidance counselors, the staff and the administration. You have an extraordinary group of professionals that are beating the drum for secondary education and post-secondary education. I think part of the reasons we've been so successful is because we have great partnerships with your team. So on behalf of us, we love working with your schools and the school leaderships. They're incredible, and we've been able to see these results because of that partnership and because of the support of the school board as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? It is truly our pleasure to partner with you. And like I said, what you're doing in this community is truly making a difference, you know, and we are truly transforming this community together. So thank you and continue to do the great work.
Thank you, you too. Thank you.
Dr. Haynes?
For our next report, Dr. James T. Harris will provide an update on the development and implementation of the signature experiences. Dr. Harris is our chief academic officer. The signature experiences for our students beginning in kindergarten will ensure that we are intentional in ensuring the outcomes outlined in the portrait of a graduate. These experiences serve as a vehicle in how we are transforming teaching and learning in Hampton City Schools, and we will outline things that we're doing intentionally in Master Plan 2.0. Dr. Harris.
Good evening, Chair Mason, members of the Hampton School Board, Dr. Haynes, and the Hampton community. One community, one transformation. Excellence with intentionality. As we continue to transform what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools, I am excited this evening to bring you updates regarding Master Plan 2.0, specifically the development and implementation of signature experiences for all of our elementary and middle school students with our K-12 transformation. At the heart of everything we're doing to truly transform teaching and learning is the quote, "The me I see is the me I'll be." We know our young people deserve a quality education that prepares them to be future-ready. As we develop these signature experiences, which you will see shortly, our young people were at the center, affirming that the belief you have to see it before you see it. God did our work. Inherent in the essential understanding is, I have to see me. I have to see me as a person, my unique traits, skills, abilities, what I'm passionate about, what comes easy for me, and what presents challenges for me, and how I overcome them. I have to see me in my community, and I have to see me in my future. Our aim was to ensure that we were intentional in aligning experiences to ensure outcomes that capture the essence of this quote. Our tactical team defined our work in a community-connected, authentic teaching and learning model, where, as you can see, intentional efforts to use real-world experiences to help students learn, develop, and demonstrate the portrait of a Hampton graduate outcomes. We know that this does not start in high school, but we must ensure that we have the foundation set, starting in kindergarten. This evening, I would like to share with you the world premiere of our signature experiences, highlighting our definition, framework, and community-connected experiences for many grade levels. You will have the opportunity to follow Jemaya along her journey of self, community, and careers, as she gathers experiences to ensure that she is prepared not only for college or career academies she selects in high school, but also for her post-secondary success. So no, we're not pushing academies down to elementary and middle grades, but ensuring alignment of our experiences to meet the portrait of a Hampton graduate.
Are you ready to learn about signature experiences in Hampton City Schools? Signature experiences are part of our one community, one transformation, and they help students answer these questions. Who am I? What do I want for my future? And how do I get there? And how do we help students be prepared for success in careers, lifelong learning, and Well, a signature experience is an educational promise that brings together instruction, community engagement, family involvement, and fun through a series of adventures that align and build upon each other. A signature experience is made up of touchpoints and culminating events. Touchpoints are a series of formal activities specifically designed to develop the Hampton portrait of a graduate qualities and provide students with knowledge and skills needed to successfully participate in the culminating events. Embedded throughout the signature experience are authentic, community-connected field experiences, which are activities co-developed and designed with community partners to provide hands-on and relevant experiences. A signature experience has many important qualities, such as it's integrated right into the curriculum, it involves families, it's community-connected and co-developed, it engages student voice and choice, and most importantly, it's fun. But you may be wondering, what exactly does a signature experience look like? Well, meet Jemaya, a Hampton City Schools third grader. This year, Jemaya will explore the theme of self-awareness through a signature experience called "I and We and the Museum of Me." Of course, Jemaya was prepared for her grade-three year by completing signature experiences in kindergarten through second grade. In kindergarten, her signature experience was Introduction to Self. In grade one, it was Introduction and Connection to Self and Community. And in grade two, it was Introduction and Connection to Self, Community, and Industry. For her grade-three signature experience, Jemaya will create sculptures to learn about herself, her classmates, and other cultures, keep a gratitude journal in writing class, create a data and gratitude collage in math class, create a mosaic of me to reflect her unique identity, and create art that shows her personal goals and potential future careers. Jemaya will also experience activities in and out of school, co-created with community partners, such as the Mariners Museum, the Hampton History Museum, and the Hampton University Museum. These authentic, community-connected experiences, co-designed with our community partners, will help Jemaya learn how artifacts from the past help us learn about civilizations and individuals, and help Jemaya choose her own artifacts to represent her for her culminating project. And what will that culminating project look like? It will be the Museum of Me, an event in which all third graders display and celebrate their year of work. But it doesn't end there. In fourth grade, the signature experience theme is community awareness, which considers the question, "How can I make a difference in my community?" Students will identify a community challenger concern, collect data, share potential solutions, and create a video to advocate for their solution. To help Jemaya and other fourth graders learn more about their community, they'll be given an adventure pass, which is a program co-created by Hampton City Schools, Bethel High School, Media Arts and Design Academy students, and the Hampton Tourism Board. It lets students visit amazing places around Hampton, such as the Aquaplex, Sky Zone, Sandy Bottom Nature Park, and more. Students will also visit Jamestown and Colonial Williamsburg to engage in lessons co-designed with HCS to support the signature experience. In grade five, students dive into career awareness by asking the question, "What career do I want, and how do I get there?" They will take a career inventory, research careers to create goals, and then participate in a reverse career fair. Even better, students will take a class called "The Etiquette Edge," an online course created by Phoebus High School students to enhance students' proficiency in etiquette and social interactions, essential for navigating various career contexts confidently. At the end of their fifth-grade year, students will complete a capstone project in which they participate in a reverse career fair by creating a presentation to showcase their skills for the career they'd like to have one day, as well as show how they're ready to transition to middle school. In middle school, the focus is on interdisciplinary learning with themes such as grade six, self and community exploration; grade seven, self and community partnerships; and grade eight, self and community impact and transition. The grade-eight signature experience will also help students transition to high school. Students will explore what it means to be a good citizen, research potential careers, meet with community members through the Living Library Experience in partnership with Hampton Public Libraries, and complete a capstone community impact project at the eighth-grade Capstone Project Showcase, competing for the chance to display their projects at the High School Building Tomorrow Showcase. In high school, students experience project-based learning through the following themes. Grade nine, self, career, and industry exploration; grade 10, industry and career exploration; grade 11, career exploration and immersion; and grade 12, career immersion. So who's ready to transform teaching and learning?
I hope you enjoyed the journey of Jemaya and truly our approach to transforming and developing these signature experiences. While this was just the snapshot of her different elementary and middle school experiences, I did want to briefly highlight her sixth and seventh-grade years. As you can see, this is Jemaya after her introductory years in second grade, third, fourth, fifth, and then sixth grade is where you see the jellyfish and then the microphone in seventh grade. In sixth grade, the theme is self and community exploration, which will lead her on an immersive adventure, the importance of water and maritime in her community. She will earn badges all year as she demonstrates competencies outlined in the portrait of a Hampton graduate. Her field experiences will be in partnership with the Mariners Museum bugging out the bay and the Virginia Tech Seafood Agriculture and Research Center, AOH STEM Day. She will design an immersive experience such as a digital escape room, graphic novel, or VR interactive map as her culminating project that will be showcased for family and the community. In seventh grade, where you see her with the microphone, she will explore self and community partnerships, my culture and my community, where students will complete asset mapping of community resources, interview family members as they dig deeper into their culture and what defines culture. Jemaya will complete field experiences with the Virginia Museum of History and Culture and gain experiences with the storytelling alliances of Hampton and Virginia to prepare for the multicultural carnival, showcasing her pop-up exhibits. This year, we configured the Authentic Teaching and Learning tactical team, which comprised of curriculum, instruction, and assessment team members, academies of Hampton coaches, and extended enrichment coordinators, community members, and school counselors. An outgrowth of this work was to ensure that these experiences were embedded into our curriculum for in-school and out-of-school time. We engaged the entire community throughout the year, all school administrators, community members, and parents through our community priorities workshop and feedback from students. Additionally, we engaged every elementary and middle school staff members in developing these experiences. Next steps include continued pilots of instructional touchpoints in classrooms and through our extended enrichment program in upcoming summer school and camp programs. What you will also notice, and that was also captured in Jemaya's journey, is the development of the K-2 experiences, which is scheduled to be piloted next year with full implementation of our three-through-eight experiences, truly making us a K-12-designated community. I would like to say that this work is not done in isolation, as this is one community, one transformation. At this time, I would like for all community partners to stand and be recognized. As you've seen tonight, this transformation is not possible without the invaluable relationship we share and how this co-designed model shapes the educational experiences of our students. I would like to say that your partnership and support are integral to our success, and we couldn't achieve our goals without your dedication and collaboration as the first, let me rephrase, as the first Ford Next Generation Learning-designated K-12 community in the nation. Thank you so much for your partnership. At this time, that concludes the presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Harris. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Kilgore.
I think my fellow board members will agree with me that you could probably replace Jemaya's name with Faith Gatlin. And "the me I see is the me I'll be" fits her so well.
Yes.
So really appreciate that. I look forward to the fact that Faith is in second grade, she's just starting this journey that you laid out. Very excited for her to go through this experience. Thank you.
Exactly. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Samuels?
Chairman Mason, it's not a question that I have, Dr. Harris, is the fact that I am so impressed that, you know, our student will be able to start that capstone project so early, and how it evolves from middle, from elementary to middle to high school. And they're able to chart that and really look at how that thing has morphed, grown from a caterpillar to a butterfly. And I'm just so excited with how the narrative is written for our young people, and we're showcasing the diversity that resides in Hampton. I am so appreciative for the community to step up to support this initiative because without our community, this could not be, this wouldn't be successful. And so, community, thank you so much for that partnership and that collaboration.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Chair?
Mr. Chair, you know, this is just amazing. Even if you know it, it's amazing. It really hits home to know just how impactful Hampton City Schools is trying to be with every child, every day, whatever it takes. And for us, in collaboration with the community, to have basically a blueprint, a game plan, you know, speaks volumes because it's more than just about showing up, going to school every day. There's a reason that you're there, and we're going to make sure that you get the best every day right through each year, right up to graduation. And as he talked about the capstones, I mean, who would think in elementary, you know, could even spell capstone? And here we are doing it. I just think it's amazing. And like I said, even if you know about it, when you hear about it and you speak word to it and you put it out in the universe, it's even more powerful. So I just want to thank everybody involved, especially the community who basically said, "We believe in Hampton City Schools." You know, a lot of people can say, "We want to partner with you if," but these people came in knowing that we had a gem, but we could only make it brighter if they partnered with us. So we want to thank you as well. Thank you.
And I would just like to add to that. It's so great to see what we're doing in this community because it truly builds hope. When I see Chief Jimmy Whitman over there, when I see Nicolette Brown over there from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, we see a lot of people that step up time after time, and these are faces that we see on a regular basis, not just at events where we are recognizing them, but they're showing up to do the work. And it really makes a big difference in the community. And so we are very fortunate. One of the things that I see when I travel around to other communities and look at what other divisions are doing and things of that nature, it reminds me of how fortunate we are because we get it. We truly get it. And, you know, the mindset is that we continue to do the work. So thank you to our community partners and all that you do because we cannot do the work in this community without you. So thank you for helping us build hope and transform the community. Mr. Samuels?
So an idea just came to mind. I'm going to look to Dr. Haynes. And as we celebrate in... You know, as we celebrate in Jamaya, and we have so many of our Hampton City School product that are still within Hampton City Schools, if we can also capture those individual stories, such as Dr. Cagiano, Dr. Haynes, who has, who have come through the pipeline, elementary all the way, middle school, high school, if we can capture these individuals on a slide, and, and Cherry and Joe, and Stefan Afanjah, and capture these individuals, so Jamaya and middle school can see that Dr. Haynes went to such and such a school, and now he's the superintendent, because it now attached to that capstone project. So, Dr. Haynes, if you can do it, please, I would like for you to highlight all of our Hampton City School administrators and teachers who have gone through.
I think, I think that's a great idea, and we should follow up with that. And we started some of that work with Ms. Gore a few years ago, capturing Hampton City Schools graduates and then coming back to share their story and the journey that they took.
Absolutely, thank you. A thought just came to me.
Now, that made me think of something.
Oh, Lord.
No, this is so awesome, so the question becomes, how do we make sure every parent in Hampton City Schools, A, know that we've got a game plan regardless of what grade their little one is in, and what that game plan is? How do we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we're listening to it, but can you imagine if parents, really, if every parent knew, then they're, they're going to be foot soldiers and tell the story, and then they're going to say to people, you need to come to Hampton, because this is what we're doing. What are we doing to make sure that we get that word out? Because I know it's massive.
Yes, ma'am, it definitely is. And, you know, I know we started some of the work with our community hubs, but more importantly, we have a family engagement tactical team that is really important and integral to this work to ensure that that messaging, but more importantly, that they have the resources and efficacy to support their young people throughout this journey, but then to also spread the word. So, you know, that's led by Dr. Barrow, and we're definitely going to be working to ensure that the family engagement piece is there through that tactical team.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Afanjah?
Thank you, Dr. Mason. What I'm, what I think is really remarkable is that this list of community partners just continues to grow and grow and grow every time that we encounter it. And so, we know this is not everyone who the division is partnering with, but there are a lot of folk here who the division is partnering with, and then they're here in the audience, again, thank you for coming. And I know it takes a lot to, to engage with the partners and to have them in place and ready for students to follow the curriculum. And so, I'm just really excited that the division have folk in place, have staff in place, who are really diligent about engaging the partners and building the partnerships. So kudos to them as well, as to everyone that is here for really pursuing these partnerships and really working with the partners so that they understand what we're doing and work collaboratively with us in a way that allows our students to really have these real experiences, not something that, you know, we're just talking about, but real, real experiences. I think it's just remarkable. Great list, great partners, just excellent work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
I do not want to be left out. Wonderful job, Dr. Harris. I did want to share what rested my attention was the fact that it's a smooth or easier transition for our students to adjust to one class or one grade after the other. And then by the time that they get to the ninth grade, they have some type of idea of what academy they really want to go into. I think one of the things that I have found with some of the young people that are part of my congregation is that when they get to the ninth grade, it's sort of like a rush for them to hurry up and figure out which academy they really want to go into. But I think this program makes it a lot easier for them to, you know, already have an idea of what academy that they want to go into. So I think it's a wonderful, wonderful program that you have here. Beautiful presentation, and I didn't want to be left out.
We wouldn't leave you out, Dr. Woodhouse. But I do, I do want to take a moment to just acknowledge someone who was actually on board with the mindset of the academy model long before we even ventured off into the academies, and that was Hampton Roads Educators Credit Union. They were, put a bank inside of Hampton High School long before we began this process, and they're here and they're still on board with us. And that, and that's what it takes. It takes, it takes that forward vision and forward thinking, and it takes that commitment, and they're still here. So we must be doing something right, and so thank you very much, Ms. Ori. All right, all right. So, Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
For our final report, Mrs. Brittany Branch, Chief Financial Officer, will provide a business operations update.
Good evening, Chair Mason, school board members, Dr. Haynes, and Hampton community. It's my pleasure to present the March 2024 Board Report. At the end of March, our revenues totaled $173 million. This was less than 1% lower when compared to the previous fiscal year. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $208 million, and this was $7.1 million higher, again, compared to prior year March of 2023. Our March ADM was submitted at the end of April, and that was reported at $18,909. That is a difference of $127 when compared to our budget at ADM of $19,036. The impact is estimated to be a little over $3 million decrease. However, we do build our budget with contingency, and we also monitor our spending. So we are pretty confident that we'll be able to cover that shortfall if it does materialize at that amount with our contingency and expenditure savings such as payroll vacancies. And that is to ensure that we are not impacting our instructional program or other operations within the school division. And as always, we do have a list of the transfers to and from the technology classification for March as well. And that concludes tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes Superintendent and Staff reports.
All right, thank you very much. Item number five, deliberation first read. We have 5.01, Revision of School Board Policy IHBG, Home Instruction; 5.02, Revision of School Board Policy JC, School Attendance Zones; 5.03, Revision of School Board Policy JEA, Compulsory Attendance; 5.04, Revision of School Board Policy JEF, Release Time for Students; 5.05, Revision of School Board Policy JEH, Learn Fair Agreement, Implementation of Compulsory School Attendance, Provisions of the TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families; 5.06, Review of School Board Policy JFF, Married Students; 5.07, Revision of School Board Policy JGA, Corporal Punishment; 5.08, Revision of School Board Policy JI, Student Scholarships.
Dr. Haynes and our Hampton School families. I am here with the pleasure of sharing policies not nearly as exciting as our academy work and our K-12 transformation, but will share with you first read and just some changes and updates to the policy. Our first policy is our Home Instruction Policy, and there are some changes made to that in our staff titles. You'll see we added guardian many times to the parent, and just a few updates on the procedures there. The next policy, our School Attendance Zone Policy. There's a change on, two on the second page when we're talking about exemptions, and other than that, we changed the names of the schools that are involved, Mary W. Jackson there. And our next policy, the Compulsory Attendance Policy, that one, the reason for the change, we do have an update for legal references due to the Code of Virginia. And so, if you look at the end of that policy, you'll see there is notation of how we need to follow up with students who are unenrolled, students who don't show up at the beginning of the school year, students who maybe are absent and we cannot locate them. So what our responsibilities are there, that is added per the code. The next policy is Release Time for Students, and this is a policy we're recommending, the committee is, for deletion in that this policy doesn't necessarily align and match with our current opportunities for students with the academies and the internships and all the after-school opportunities that they have. The next policy, Learn Fair Agreement, there's minor language changes in that policy just to reflect the true timeline that we use with the Human Services Department in how we report that. And moving right along, our Married Students Policy is a simple five-year review, no changes recommended. Corporal Punishment Policy is also a five-year review, no changes recommended. And then our final policy for this evening is our Student Scholarships, and there's minor language changes made to reflect our current department names and how we address those.
All right, any clarifying questions from board members? All right, okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, next up is item number six, but we don't have anyone that signed up to speak for this evening, so we will move right along to item number seven, Items for Information. 7.01, our next meeting, the next work session will be held on May 15th, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School, and the next regular meeting of the board will be held on June 5th, once again, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. So 7.02, Other Items for Information, I will start with the Superintendent, Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will be hosting some visitors from Richmond over the next couple of days. Tomorrow morning, Lieutenant Governor Sears will be making the trip to Hampton to recognize seven Marine Corps JROTC cadets, will be awarded military scholarships totaling $2 million. And on Friday, our State Superintendent of Instruction, Dr. Lisa Coons, will be visiting Bastard Elementary School to hear about some of the great work taking place there in the area of literacy, and then she will head to Bethel High School to see our academies in action. Additionally, Thursday night marks the beginning of some events taking place around the city this weekend with Allen Iverson, and he is returning home to host his annual Iverson Classic, showcasing some of the top high school basketball talent in the country. Thursday evening, beginning right at 6 o'clock, they will have a skills competition. And then Saturday, the high school, the skills competition will take place at Bethel High School beginning at 6 o'clock. And then on Saturday, the high school all-stars will play against one another in a game that will take place at the Hampton Coliseum at 7:00 PM. Lastly, we are pleased to report that as of today, we have hired 175 custodians and are on track to meet our goal of 196 for the new school year. Just a note to the viewing audience that we are holding our final walk-in hiring event for custodians tomorrow from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at our One Franklin Street location, and this will be on the third floor in our Human Resources office. And I am complete with additional announcements, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Other announcements from board members? Other information, Mr. Samuels?
Chairman Mason, I just want to acknowledge that the intramural basketball regular season ended this past Monday. The playoffs started on today at Bull Williams Sport Complex. It was jam-packed, and that's the reason why I was a little bit tardy for this school board meeting, because I had to make sure that I support our young people in the intramural sport and, and let them know that the board totally supports them. And so, we're looking forward to see who going to be the basketball championship in a few days, who will be in the basketball championship in a few days.
All right, anyone else? All right, with no further business to be brought before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.